Very planning board meeting to order. Um, if you can all do the flags.
My allegiance to the flag. United States. To the Republic. One nation.
Nation. Individual liberty and just.
Gabby, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Omquist?
Yes.
Mr. Deckard?
President.
Mr. Lee?
President.
Mr. Morrow?
Here.
Mrs. Stravopoulos?
Here.
Mr. Stoll?
Here.
Chairman Ring?
Here. Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from January?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from January. Omquist.
I'll second.
All in favor? I.
Hi.
Hi.
Against? All right. Uh, as a point of of business, it's my intention to return to in-person meeting uh in for March. So barring any changes, um, we'll meet at the town hall next month. Uh, the first item of business is uh is old business. It's Woods Road Solar Farm. Um. The gentleman here from Woods Road? Didn't see him. Join. All right.
I don't see anybody.
Okay. Um, there's been a lot of email back and forth on the uh the solar plan. Frank, you were at the the county. It appears the county didn't get some of the documents that.
They didn't get any of the documents.
None of the documents.
They had the base documents that came to Gabby first time out. None of the additions that were added after your workshop or anything was submitted to the county.
Gabby, did we receive any of the additional documents?
Everything I received, the county received.
Well, I know there's. Sig- uh, there was some significant, um. You know, this application has a number of different components. Um, it's a complex application, so. Actually, I see Keith. Keith, did you join?
Yes.
Keith, how are you?
Yes. Good. How are you?
Good. So we're talking about the Woods Solar Farm.
Wait. Are you talking about the eighty-five caro terrace? One?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Are you talking about the eighty-five caro terrace? The spa?
No, no, we'll get to that in um. You're third on the list.
Okay, got it.
Um, isn't. Did some? Did someone join from the Woods Solar Farm project?
And Keith.
Yeah.
Yeah, Keith Liebold and Daniel.
Yep. So I think this is a discussion tonight. I think there are some outstanding uh documents. Can you give us the status of where you you're at with the outstanding document?
So are those documents regarding? I know we had a decommissioning um plan that you guys wanted us to get done with Jason Kovacs.
Yep.
So that is still in the works. Um, we have a decommissioning plan, but not an agreement. What else regarding? I know there's some county comments that they wanted us to get some stuff um regarding the town. I know you guys wanted us to contact the Army Corps for the permit, wetland permit.
Yep.
Um, we have contacted them. We applied for the permit. Uh, we haven't earned anything back. Uh, it could be up to forty-five days for that to um to go through.
Okay, Dave, you have a list of the items that we talked about during the workshop, I believe. Can?
Yeah, so uh. In no particular order, um. Uh, stormwater and any uh driveway or road connection specs, we've got to have the to the town engineer. Chairman, I think we have to use the secondary engineer, because if I get it correct, uh, Benir and Larios is working for the applicant.
He is. So we were waiting for that engineer, and we were gonna have Michael uh Morgante connect with him.
So there's a bundle of materials, including the stormwater management plan that's also on the county list. Uh, Frank shared with us some notes on the county. We haven't seen their memo yet, so. We don't know exactly what it says, but that's item one that needs to get sent to the secondary engineer. There's also related to that, the temporary water line that crosses the property that, um. Uh, we need a process by which that gets reviewed to be made permanent. Um, I believe the town supervisor wants in on that discussion.
Yeah, we had to wait till we had the background survey data, which we now have from Benir and Larios. The engineer uh this week laid out the permanent water line. I'm away on vacation till Monday. My goal next week was to. Reach out to the supervisor regarding that water line and see if we can just come to a simple agreement and see how we can help uh get a permanent line installed. And process the necessary easements. And then I was gonna circle around with Jason and just talk about the decommissioning agreement. Really took no exception to it. Just haven't haven't gotten to it.
Um. Uh, you've got Warren is on the call. Um. Uh, we're gonna need the status on the uh flood floodplain development permit. Which is coordinated through Warren as the enforcement officer. Uh, you've talked to, I understand, based on the conversation that you've talked to the fire district, but and they don't have any comments at this point?
Got to get the finished plan over to Sean for his review. Um, I have not. I wanted to wait until we got the proper survey data before issuing, you know, plans to the. Uh, to the locale and to the county that were complete. We've got that now. We have proper uh topography now. Uh, the wetland got smaller, the upland got a little bigger. Um, so as of uh this morning. I and and I I think uh, Mr. Church, that the county might have gotten uh an improper set of plans or an incomplete set of plans. Um, I don't, I don't know how that might have happened, but um it just seemed like they weren't looking at the latest drawings or a complete set of drawings during their meeting.
Well, I guess the chairman will talk about correcting that in a few minutes, but um, the uh. Uh, again, in no particular order, they've, uh, my understanding, uh, Jeffrey is from a conversation with the applicant today. They do have. They've interacted with the DEC about the bat and eagle habitat, and you you've got a memo or you are working on that, I guess, is.
We have a memo from the DEC. Uh, that's correct, and I think we uh comply with all their. Requested concerns about the eagle habitat. So formalize that for them.
You can get that to you. You get that to Gabby, right?
Um, yeah, it's it just came in this week.
So the state historic preservation officer, we need a. Uh, we need at least a memo um on the status of historic and prehistoric archaeological sensitivity, um, which you also told me today you proceeded on, right?
Yeah, we let the archaeology out. Um, over a month ago, they went out to dig some test holes on site and were unable to break soil. Because of the frost, so they sent me a note and said, listen, we've we've got to dig some test holes. Um, I just did a phase one archaeology report. I couldn't get a memo from uh the shipper office, so I just. Went for the report. Um, I I hope I'll have it for the next meeting. Um. That I don't control the frost, so as soon as I dig some holes, they're they're ready to complete the report.
And then last is the Army Corps, uh. Um. Uh, in relation to federally uh regulated wetlands, um, which you're also working on.
Um, yeah, we we've retained Mike Nowiki, um, and he has all the information that he needs to uh get that uh in and submitted.
Um, so then at this point, we have a. I guess those are in play, Chairman. Um, uh, we could.
Here's my suggestion, Dave. So I know Keith, you have a a pretty tight timeline on this project, and we want to do everything we can to to um to help you with the project. My suggestion is we have a workshop. Two weeks from now, Gabby.
On the sixteenth.
On the sixteenth. Um. My suggestion is we we meet at the workshop. We go through the checklist. We get everything that we can um on the checklist to determine if it's enough to resend it to the county for comments for next meeting. Uh, but that's that's my suggestion.
The other thing.
Yeah. Frank, go ahead.
The other thing that needs to be evaluated is the that old barn that's on the site. The direct county director of planning is a member of a group that goes around and and measures and and. Cat and I'm not sure quite the word that they use to, but they understand they they measure and and redraw all old barns. In the county and beyond the county, and they're very concerned about the status of what will happen to that barn. As the project develops.
But Frank, what standing do they have on private property for this barn?
It's a historic preservation.
Says who?
Well, they they wanted to go to Shippensburg to find out.
Well, it's a private barn. It's a private property. Why? Why are? What standing do they have, Frank? Because if they have no standing, I don't care about them.
I have no idea. I I've just heard uh reporting what was uh brought up at the county planning board meeting.
Okay, well, if they have no standing, then I don't care for the purpose of this board, okay?
Yeah, just for clarification, Chairman, if it, the state has standing if it's lit. If it's what's called listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places, and there's nothing on or near that property that's listed.
Because the plan is to that, my understanding is the plan is to to um take the barn down um in in part of this project.
Uh, we currently have a demolition, an open demolition permit from the building inspector who seems anxious for us to take it down. It's it's not a sound structure.
Well, I might get that done sooner than later. Does our alternate? Mr. Morrow, have anything to say since he has a historic building?
Um, if if they have not applied to the state and the federal government to have it a national or state historic landmark, then they have no say over it whatsoever. Uh, they they can put it on their wish list, or somebody can, and say, I'd like to see it, but they have no authority.
Yeah, in that, unless they can show, unless they can show standing here, I I I don't, I don't consider them relevant to this project.
It took me two and a half years and several thousand dollars in in the tune of like ten thousand dollars to get. My properties listed on the National and State Historic Landmark Registry. It's quite a process. Had I not done that, I could have torn down anything. But I I had a personal interest in in securing the history of my property.
Okay, so.
So Chairman, if I may, it's uh there's so uh for discussion, if anyone has a thought. There were two issues that the notes from both Frank and the applicant who attended the county planning board meeting. Um, there there's some consistency. There's two items that we have not discussed um at all previously. One is this question of visibility, including glare potentially on the throughway or on and off ramps to the throughway. And the second is a request from the county that a concept that I'm not totally familiar with, that the uh property be se- secured with wildlife fencing.
So two two questions on that, Dave. Is there um a documented procedure that the county is looking for to determine whether or not there's glare, that glare would affect the throughway?
Well, this can this case, the applicant, I think, is prepared to respond with uh details on the the type of uh solar panels they're gonna use, which are non-glare. So they they're prepared to provide us with that information. Um, so it it should be a non-issue, but uh Keith or anyone want to respond more fully?
Uh, no, when we come to the next meeting, you know, we just got these comments. Um, when we come to the next meeting, we'll add a cut sheet for a non-glare panel listed on the site plan. I don't, I don't.
Previous two solar arrays, they did um, they did a visual impact. They flew a balloon. They did it for um Pioneer, and they did it for Landau. That's up to you. That's up to the board if they want to go to that or not.
Um, this is uh, the the county raised the question of glare, not the whether you can see it. Um, uh, from a location. This is not an elevated location like the uh Pioneer Solar or what's what's called Glide Path.
Yeah, and and Dave, I drive by this every day on twenty-eight. I'm not sure that I even see the location that we're talking about. It's 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 fairly well-hidden. Um, but we can talk further about that at the workshop. Um, as far as the wildlife fencing, have we, we have not required wildlife fencing on on the other two solar projects, have we?
There's been fencing around it primarily to keep the larger bodies out. You you don't mind rabbits and woodshocks going under it, but you definitely don't want people or deer wandering through.
Well, Frank, what would wildlife fencing be besides eight feet tall? Barbed wire?
I I hope not, but uh probably something with maybe an eight-inch mesh or something like that that allows. It keeps the deer out, but lets uh lets everything else through.
Well, Landau did a full chain link, the entire site. I don't know how many thousand feet they put in.
I think the county was more looking for.
Deer might cause a problem with the solar ra- array?
I I think Keith Keith's trying to explain what you heard.
I think they were more looking for pass-throughs for larger wildlife that might be migrating through the site. And our explanation was you have a highway on both sides and a commercial use on the third side. I don't believe, you know, and I I am a hunter. I went back in there. There there is a wildlife passage, but it's actually up by two oh nine. On the other side of the high line right away, it's a pretty well-worn deer trail where they walk the high side of the property, which would be outside of the array. I don't see any migrating animals on the lower part of the site. Um, that would benefit from some type of wildlife passage through the array. That's my opinion.
Would it be an issue if they did migrate through the array?
Um, you know, the the solar providers would prefer that you don't have large animals going through their array. Um, certainly, if we hadn't larger migrating animals. I'm on the town of gardener planning board, and we've discussed this ad nauseam about solar sites. And, you know, we we ended up landing on, look, if there's a, if a solar facility is gonna go in an area where there's known defined migration. Then we take a look at it, and you do that by just going out there and walking around the site and seeing what wildlife is there. Now, the site abuts the throughway, which there's no passage across. It's fenced in. There's a commercial use on one side. Um, I've been up there a lot. I don't see migrating animals through the site. Smaller animals, generally, the solar providers don't care about. Uh, we can hold the site up off the ground a foot if you'd like to allow those ground animals to go through there. They'd prefer that we, you know, did not make travel ways in through the solar, because it is an electric. Uh, facility. But it's up to this board's discretion as to what they'd like to see or not see in that location.
Yep.
I mean, for large animal um. Fencing, you need something seven, eight feet high, and the throughway has four-foot-high fences typically. And a four-foot-high fence, a deer can just step over.
Yep. Then you have to. Let's not get caught up on on that point. I think that's a county comment we could override if necessary. Um, so why don't we see you on the sixteenth, reevaluate what um what documents you have? So that we can resubmit the application to the county, because we we've already voted to do that, and this would just be a recommitment of it, okay?
We should use the same kind of fencing as what's used on the project down on Route thirty-two.
Happy to discuss it at the workshop, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything else? All right. Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate the update.
Thank you so much.
Talk about fire company. Access.
We we did, I thought. I I thought he mentioned it went to the fire.
I don't have it drawn out yet.
Okay. I'm I'm good.
Yeah, we. We currently show an access on the site too from the inverters with a fire truck turnaround. We do not show access into the field itself. We're trying to minimize disturbance down in the wetland, and because you've got roadways and a parking lot on the other side of the site. Um, the solar companies would prefer we don't have uh driveways into the array itself. We will, when we install the water line, have an a twenty-foot-wide access way in between the panels, and I want to discuss with the supervisor if you'd like an access way put through with that. Which we're certainly willing to do and accommodate, and we can now show that because we have proper survey data.
Okay, good. And then, um. I I know last meeting we voted to um for the lot line adjustment. Have you guys submitted all the paperwork for the lot line adjustment on the property?
Uh, I believe we just got the maps with the correct title blocking and such today from Benir and Larios.
Excellent. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so Chairman Ring, I'm gonna be um bring that up to Gabby so she can have you uh sign it, and then it will be given to the county.
Okay, great. Uh, Gabby, as soon as that you get that, let me know. I'll come up and uh and take care of that.
Okay.
Is is there any formal action, Mr. Chairman, that needs to be taken to get an alternate engineer? To review this?
That's a process question, Warren or Gabby. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Already been sent. It was forwarded from Benir and Larios to our alternate engineer.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thanks, guys. We'll see you uh in a week or so.
Sounds good. Appreciate the time.
Bye-bye.
Okay, the next item of business is JLM, and I apologize for sticking this on the agenda with no notification, but this was before the board a year ago. For a drive-through window at the old TCBY location on, is it Morton Boulevard? At Morton Boulevard? Um, and their approved site plan time is about to run out, so this is just um a vote to. Extend the site plan amendment. Um, so that's all it is. Nothing's changing with the plan. It's just for an extension.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. Decker?
I'll second. This is Andrew.
Gabby, can you call the roll?
Mr. Omquist?
Yes.
Mr. Deckard?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoll? Or I apologize. Am I missing here? The Stravopoulos, yep.
Yep.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, the next item of business is Carl Terrace Spa, and this is a building that is located uh just off of nine W in Lake Katrine. Um, it abuts the Kia uh project uh zone. We met with these folks at. The February workshop, if I'm not mistaken. It might have been the January workshop. Um, at the time, we requested um have a a site plan uh produced for this project. Um, there's been some discussion back and forth on the project related to uh the location of the building that may encroach upon the Kia. Um, Kia property itself, and so one of the things that this board will want clarity on is um the property boundaries of. The building to make sure that um there's not an issue between the two properties. So I I know that the folks before us today are looking to lease the building and are not the building owners. So um, I believe it's Sky and Jing. Um, uh, how are you guys working out with your site plan?
Okay, um, I uh just spoke with our uh architecture, and he told me because we didn't do, we're we're not going to do anything. Uh, outside of the building, so uh. We bringing five copy of uh the survey map that's already have uh the parking number marked on. On the map. So he 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 told me, so probably, you know, this is a good enough, so I'm not sure.
Okay, so do you have that already or no?
Oh, I already uh gave it to Mr. Worm uh since uh when we sending the uh application. I make a five copy of them. That's what he told me.
Okay, Warren, do you have those?
On front of me. I don't know when they came in. I'll have to track them down. The problem with the the building is that showed up on. Romeo Kia had their entire property survey. So here it is. I don't know.
Yeah, Warren, uh, zoom into that southwest corner. Of the building. You can.
Yep.
Yeah, there you go. You see that little?
Existing.
Minor and the right there. There's a little tiny encroachment according to the survey. Which Kia has brought to our attention.
J- Jason, can you weigh in on on this, what your recommendation is?
Well, I think we need a. We need a site plan that uh deals with the uh encroachment. Um, some sort of lot line adjustment between the two property owners. Um, and then we need, you know, the final site plan map showing all the parking and uh all the other typical um things to look for on a site plan.
Now, now with the site plan amendment, will they need to um meet the setbacks to move the property line? Because this is well within the setbacks. This would be what? A a back, a rear setback? In this case?
Right, very right. Uh. I ideally, yes, we would just need that to um to uh conform with our current rear setback requirement, which is, I don't know, ten foot or whatever it is in this district.
Okay, so I I think we need to get the property owner engaged in this project. And um, again, my recommendation, I think, is that we cover this at the planning workshop. Where we can talk with both um the. Uh, Leacy, which is you folks here on the call, and the property owner to resolve what appears to be a lot line uh property boundary issue for one. Um. The second was the number of inside um rooms or offices. Um, and the required parking for employees and customers. I think that you were short. Um, some parking when we covered this the last time, and Warren, I think we have several ways we can work and adjust the parking. Um, do you want to weigh in on the parking?
Yeah, we um. It's possible. I noticed that there, for one, their their accessible parking spot is larger than it needs to be. You'll start with. Um, also, you might be able to work out something with it. It's not delineated here, but um. There's parking to the west side. That they may be able to work out an agreement with um the adjoining business or shared parking. I don't think he's actually gonna use the number of spaces that would be required according to the town code.
Right. And and what are his his options if he can't meet the town code? And and what are his his options if he can't meet the town code?
I believe you guys can grant a waiver.
Okay, that's what I thought.
You can move on.
How old is that building that's sitting there now?
Oh, I don't. So long.
I mean, sorry to interrupt. I we are now leasing the property. I bought the property like few months ago. So I am the owner of the property. So.
Okay. So um we can give you the contact name for the Romeo family who has the Kia project. And you guys can have a discussion about that property boundary in the in the building, but that needs to be resolved before I think we can go further on the site plan.
Okay.
Okay? And um Gabby in the office can get you uh the name of the contact.
Sounds good.
Okay, and if you would like, we can have further discussion on the sixteenth uh in the workshop if you would like. Um, and that may be helpful for you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. All right.
John, it was built in nineteen eighty four.
So that encroachment's been in effect since nineteen eighty four?
Probably.
It's it it is an addition. It could be that it happened subsequently.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, we'll get to the bottom of it, and we'll get that resolved. We'll get the parking resolved and and get you on your way with your project. Okay?
Uh, can I mention about the parking up?
Yes.
Actually, the owner told me uh he only need a full room for the business. So beside that, they'll use as mega office or like a storage. So I think we got a plenty parking up for the business.
So the town code has um has identified the number of parking spots that are required uh for employees and customers based on what you're doing there, how many rooms, and so on. Um, it would be helpful if you go through the town code and you calculate how many parking spots you need. And then compare it against how many parking spots you have. You may have more, you may have less. Um, I think, Warren, you can help him out with the the computation if you need. Um. But you'll want to have that calculation on your site plan here. So even if it's, you know, written in, whatever you want to do, just make sure that you have that calculation so that we know. Okay?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes. Um, is there anything else from the board or Warren, Jason? Um, Dave?
No, I think we can address this at the workshop.
Okay, and the only other question that that I want to have, can you help me understand what um type of business this is and what it will be? Uh, what you will have uh in terms of services?
Yeah, we only going to do like four rooms for massage, just, you know, regular massage. It's like kinda like a foot spa.
Okay, so so it's primarily uh massages that you're giving there?
Yes.
Okay.
Are your employees going to be licensed massage therapists?
Yes.
And beyond spa, will you be doing um like hair and nails and feet? That type of thing, or just massages?
Just massage.
Okay.
Do you have any other uh businesses that are similar to this that you run?
Yes, we are currently ha- happy spot located in, let's see, Morton Boulevard, you know, right in right across the Federal Credit Union.
Okay, that that's your business?
Yeah, that's my mom's business, and she's trying to move to the lo- new location to eighty-five caro terrace, the building that I just bought.
So that business is moving to Crow Terrace?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, uh um, do you guys have anything else or any other questions for us?
So all we need to do is figure out, you know, the calculation for the parking space and talk to the other owner about the adjacent property, and what else do we need to do? I'm trying to write down a note for myself so I remember.
Um, any signs, if you're gonna have a sign that is different than the existing sign, um, we'll need to know that.
We just need to change the name of the business, and we're not going to put more signs outside. Nope.
Okay. So be you'll be using existing sign um location and size.
Yeah, but just, you know, different name.
Yep. Okay.
So then they'll have Chairman, they'll have to just update on the site plan, which is which they presented, which is from nineteen ninety-nine. Um, they'll just have to update that with a new owner name. Um, and business reference. Um, and then identify on that you they could use the current site plan with permission from the preparer of that. Um, and put the parking on that as well.
Well, if if we're changing the lot line to correct the um encroachment, then the site plan should reflect the new lot lines.
Correct.
Which will have to be surveyed.
Yep.
Okay.
Great.
All right, thank you. And if you have any questions, um get ahold of Gabby in the office, and if you wanna um talk about the site plan and give us an update on um your conversation with the Romeo family, we can meet on the sixteenth in the workshop. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, um, the next order business is Easy HVAC Apartment. Um, I believe this is a uh commercial building that they'd like to modify to include one apartment. David, you want?
Suddenly, lost your audio.
My audio?
Definitely lost your audio for a moment.
Okay, sorry about that. David, do you want to go through the um the apartment?
Yes, so it's a an existing one-story commercial building on Northern Ulster Avenue. Um, they're requesting guy, I it's a, if you look at it, there's a a set of entrances. They're proposing to make one of them an apartment. Um, and uh in reviewing this with Warren, uh, it appears, and they're in the hut, they're in the highway commercial zone, apologies. Um, it appears they have in terms of allowing the use two options, which I defer to the planning board on. One is that the H, the highway commercial zone does allow apartment, does allow residential over non-residential. Um, I presume the presumption is that uh a business could have a caretaker or an owner or a manager um or an employee living uh above the business. Um, since this is a one-story building, we're gonna have to uh be creative in how we um translate that to uh one a residence inside a commercial building. Um, but that's allowed by special use. That's the only residential use allowed in the H C highway commercial zone by right or by special use. Um, so barring that option, it's looking like uh a variance to do this.
So that would be the zoning, right?
Yeah, I'll weigh in. Having having the residence next to the business is inherently safer than having the residence above the business. Um, I think back in the day, it may have been an oversight by zoning when they created the code. It's a mixed use. It would be a mixed-use building, which is uh allowed by the building code with certain stipulations, which the applicant is aware of. Um, so that's that's the route I took. It was more of a semantic whether the residence was above it or next to it. It's still in the same building.
I I would agree with that interpretation, Warren.
Thank you.
So beyond that, it's a very straightforward proposal. Um, there's no, there's no environmental concerns. Um, it's an existing building with access. Um, I presume there's no signage involved. Um, we could talk a little about it, whether they're adding any exterior lighting or keeping what's there. Um, but it's only the matter resolving uh how to approve the use.
And would there be dedicated parking spot for the residents, or would be just a mix with the commercial spot?
So I I'm currently the leasing on the property. However, um Joe Pittenelli is the bu- uh building owner and property owner. Joe has given me permission to move forward with this because he, we're in the process of me purchasing the building from him. So and when we first approached this, I approached Warren with the fact of building uh an actual family dwelling on the property. Uh, according to building code, it was permitted to have a secondary uh a residence with a business. However, the landscape won't allow it. There's too much of a hill in the back of it. A lot of it is rock, so we went with the apartment idea inside the building. My business is also in the building, so I don't know how you would really dedicate. I it's me personally who would be moving in there. I'm not doing it to rent it. I'm doing it to have my business and my home in the same location.
Understood.
But if you're referring to needing parking for the residents, uh there's app- plenty of ample space. I mean, the other side is literally just a warehouse and an uh one desk office.
Got it. Yep, that that was, you know, my main question was, you know, was there a, you know, sometimes when we have these mixed-use um buildings, uh, there there's a dedicated reserved parking spot for the residents around the side versus in the front, and I was just wondering if if that's what it is. But if it's your business, um, you know, I I totally understand what you're doing.
I mean, we could absolutely dedicate two parking spaces right in front of the door for, say, resident said residents.
He does have ample parking on the site. And and he parks his trucks for work overnight, and then in the morning, they come in, park their personal cars, pick their work trucks and go. So he can park everything on there at the same time. Both personal and work vehicles. So there is plenty of parking.
Yep, okay, good. A- any questions from the board for this applicant? Dave, you prepared a resolution on this one?
I did not. Um, because all use was up in play. Um, technically, it would be a special use, correct, Warren? So um we could uh I could pull one together quickly. Um, but it would be the planning board referring, recommending approval to the town board.
And and it, does it need to go for a variance at the zoning board? Just a special permit?
No, just the special permit if we, if the board accepts Warren's interpretation.
Any discussion on on the board of the interpretation of the dwelling? Any issues with the the interpretation?
No, seems pretty soft.
Yeah, David, can you um you give us a resolution on the fly then for us to refer to?
Okay, um, I'll I'll fill in the details, um, but it's like a resolutional note, the specifics of the applicants. What do we got here? Um, EZ HVC apartment, uh twenty sixteen Ulster Avenue, uh section block, lot thirty-nine sixteen dash one dash thirty-two. Um, uh, the planning board has received a a complete application for special use permit for residents uh uh with uh non-residential use in the his, in the highway commercial zone. Um, uh, they have recommended to the plan town board um that the action is uh that the application is exempt from referral to the county a planning board, um, given it's the reuse of an existing structure. Um, uh, also, it's uh for the same reason reuse of the existing structure. It is, it's considered a type-two action under Seeker, and no further environmental review would be required. Uh, with those two recommendations, the planning board recommends to the town board um that they proceed to find the application, a type-two action under Seeker, and grant special use permit.
Hey, do we have a motion on the table?
I'm with here. I'll make the motion proposed by the planner.
Any discussion on it?
I yield to Andrew.
Thank you, Larry. I owe you one.
Any discussion? Okay, Gabby, can you call a roll? Call a vote, please?
Mr. Homquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Strabopoulos?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. All right, Mr. Brenner?
The applicant knows that so the final approvals with the town board at their likely at their next meeting.
Okay, and when would that be?
Seventeen.
The seventeen. I I do have one other question, if I may bring it up now. Um, I know I submitted an application for, I don't know if this pertains to this meeting or could it? But I submitted an application. I don't know if it was received to have the uh a forced main put in up to the building. So we could put in a pump-up station that would go down to the um down the I I guess the east side of the road, because I know there's one on the west side. But we can't cross the road in that location and shut nine W down to reach the uh the main.
That application would go through the, are you submitted it to our sewer department? You talked to Vinnie Maggiore?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so that 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 application goes through him.
Okay.
Uh, and then he'll coordinate that if the town board needs to be involved or not.
Okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I know. Chairman Rank, this is Andrew Stabropolis. I have to drop off for a little bit.
Okay.
I apologize. It's an unforeseen uh emergency. Um, I'll try to connect back on or or uh catch up after.
Understood, understood. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Gabby, can you um read John Morrow into the meeting in Andrew's place?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next item of business is Donna Donald Feller, and my understanding is that this is a minor subdivision of three different properties. Um. Is Mr. Feller on the line?
Uh, no, this is Chris Zell. I'm representing Mr. Feller.
Yes. Okay, so can you describe this? I'm gonna share my screen here, but can you describe the project here?
Yes, uh, Mr. Feller owns several pieces of property off White Road, which is um off twenty-eight A on the borderline between the town of Ulster and the town of Hurley. Um, at the the way the map is oriented right now, the he he would like to give the smaller lot with the The way the map is oriented right now, he would like to give the smaller lot with the house on it, which is at the bottom of the map.
Is that, is this the property boundary right here?
That's correct. And he would like to give that property additional acreage. He's currently has a tenant in there who would like to purchase the property. He would like to make it a little bit larger to move the property line away from the rear of the house. So he's conveying that property to that parcel. At the same time, excuse me. There, take this. I apologize for that. There's a small parcel which is going to go back to Mr. Feller. It shows down at the bottom as a triangle next to the house parcel.
This right here?
That's correct. That will go from tax lot ten to tax lot nine, which is the larger parcel. Mr. Feller will give the new lot ten access over that portion of the road which passes through lot nine.
This road here?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Yep.
And then what he proposes to do is he's also changing the lot line between tax lot nine and tax lot eight point one hundred. And that is where you see the road go down through the middle. He's proposing to make the new lot line the middle of the road so that both those parcels will have access to the existing roadway.
So, so are we talking about four separate properties? This is one property?
No, we're actually talking about three properties. We start with three properties, we end with three properties.
Okay.
We're just moving the lot lines between them.
Okay.
So there's no additional lots created. All three lots are owned by Mr. Feller. And it's just simply moving lot lines around. Everything complies with zoning. The smaller lot, which doesn't comply now, will be more compliant because of the additional property.
Okay. All right, it's pretty straightforward to me. Any, any questions to the applicant from the board?
Well, it's not a subdivision.
No, no, it's not really technically a subdivision. It's lot line adjustments.
Right. But we typically do that without a public hearing. Right, Dave?
Well, the code says it's adjustments between two lots. This is adjustments between three. The applicant is in a memo requested a waiver of the hearing. Well, because it's at most a minor subdivision, there's only one hearing required to begin with. The applicant's requesting a waiver of even the one hearing. It's, I don't know, it's six of one, half dozen of the other, whether it's a series of lot line adjustments which together become a minor subdivision. Or whether it's essentially two, if he could have submitted his two separate lot line adjustments. And neither of those applications separately would have required a hearing. So it's a, it's a matter of how you, the board wants to handle it. I prepared a resolution that presumes there'll be a final hearing and a resolution that presumes that you will grant a waiver for that hearing.
Jason, do you have a preference on this?
I am fine treating it as a lot line adjustment. We're starting with three parcels, ending with three parcels. I'm comfortable with that if the board is comfortable with it.
Discussion from the board, any opinions?
I'm quizzed here. I think that's an easy way to handle this without getting into a lot of additional meetings.
I, I agree. Dave, can you read the resolution that does not require a public hearing then?
Sure. Whereas the applicant Donald Feller with Sandra Feller is seeking minor subdivision approval accordance with section one sixty-one, nine and ten of the Ulster, Town of Ulster Code. Whereas the applicant proposes to make lot line revisions between three contiguous parts, lots owned by the applicant. Whereas the proposed lots comply with the minimum lot size and the dimensions of the R sixty zoning district and certain lot line revisions will bring a one of the three lots into fuller compliance. Noting that the adjustment will make that smaller lot, at least meeting the minimum lot size requirement of the R sixty zone. Whereas pursuant to section one sixty-one, nine and ten of the town code, the proposed action is classified as a minor subdivision, which is subject to approval by the Town of Ulster Planning Board. Whereas the applicant materials and spread include a complete application. Map of the proposed other revisions prepared by Bernier and Lawless stated January sixth, twenty twenty-two. I gotta correct that, sorry. Signed on a consent form, signed escrow agreement and completed short environmental assessment form, including environmental map or summary. Whereas referral to the county planning board is not required pursuant to the land use referral guide since the proposed action involves fewer than five lots. And it's not situated in a hundred-year flat plane. Whereas the planning board considered the application materials submitted by the applicant and supported proposed action along with comments of its consultant, they meet memorandum, whereas in accordance with the subdivision, pound subdivision of land, chapter one sixty-one, the proposed action is minor subdivision. And the planning board must hold one public hearing before it can take final action, but can waive the requirement for such hearing. Whereas at the request of the applicant and consistent with the same chapter one sixty-one, the planning board agrees to waive the requirement for such hearing. As the applicant is a set of complimentary lot line revisions between contiguous lots, not resulting in the creation of any non-conforming lot under provisions of the Town of Ulster and New York State codes. And whereas the planning board declares its intent to be lead agency, classifies the action as a seeker unlisted action and upon review of the entire record makes a negative declaration after concluding the action. Does not pose any large or significant potential adverse environmental impacts. Now therefore be resolved, the planning board has determined they've complied fully with seeker. And be a further resolved, the planning board hereby grants minor subdivision, a lot line revision approval as described above, subject to the conditions, limitations or restrictions set forth below. The plan may be filed with the Office of the County Clerk after signing by the chairman of the planning board. Compliance with any comments from the Town of Ulster Highway Superintendent. Three, no changes, erasures, modifications or revisions shall be made to any plat after approval by the planning board and endorsed in writing on the plat. Four, the final plat must be filed with the Office of the County Clerk. Within sixty-two days, the final plat is approved by the planning board and five O P O fees shall be paid.
All right, do we have a motion on the table?
No moves.
Gabby, can you call the roll, call vote?
Mr. Almquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Feller.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Appreciate your time. Good night, everybody.
And I think that leaves, the last is a discussion on the Sumati Center. The applicant here?
Yes, I have.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good, good. So this project was before us in December. We voted to preliminarily approve with a condition of providing an updated site plan. I believe we've received your site, your updated site plan. And after review, David, I think it meets all the requirements that we had set forth. Okay. Do you have any updates, Mr. McNamara, that you want to add?
No, nothing has been changed since we've done this site plan. And we were hoping that it would meet all the requirements that we asked of us at the last meeting.
Any questions or discussions for the applicant on this? David, we prepared a resolution for final approval.
It's been approved. All you need to do today is, is a vote to accept condition four as being satisfied, which is, I'll read it. Based on the discussion at the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one planning board meeting. And within thirty days of that meeting, submission of a complete updated site plan map with exterior lighting details for review and approval by the town building inspector and the town planning board. So the, we're merely seeking that the planning board approves that condition is being met.
Okay, Warren, any issues with the site plan that you see?
No.
Okay, I'll make the motion that condition number four has been complied with and that's the updated site plan.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman Decker.
Gabby, can you call the roll on this?
Mr. Almquist?
Yes.
Mr. Decker?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Chairman Ring?
Yes. All right, you're all set.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, board.
Okay, I open the floor for any discussions on any items that, that you guys may have come across. Okay. And I'll just remind everybody that I'm going to plan to have an in-person meeting in March, so we'll meet at the town hall. With that, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'm quizzed here, I'll second that motion.
On favor? All right, we'll see you next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
All right. Good night, everyone. Camera stole, my camera's out. Blank screen, but thanks, everybody. Have a good night. Hello?
Thanks, John.
Okay, I wasn't sure if my audio was working.
Yeah, yes.
Thanks, Sharon. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Take care.